Okay, well Kate, if you wouldn't mind, just give us a little overview of how how things your your last term has been on on the school board. Obviously, a lot to unpack there, but kind of the highs and lows in between and and what brings you around to running again.
Sure. So as you know, I was elected in November 2019. And looking back on that time, even when I was running, probably didn't know as much as I thought I did about what this role was going to entail. And definitely had no idea what was in store for me on the board. So a few months after I got elected, the district was closed because of the pandemic. And that was a bit of a challenge as a new person on the board. I was the only new person who had been elected. So it was it was tricky to kind of figure out what was expected and who people are and learning people's names and all that stuff. But I did, when it was safe, start meeting with the executive team in one-on-one meetings to just kind of learn everyone's role and to learn as much as possible about the district. And then, you know, we were dealing with the pandemic and the debates around mask wearing and best, you know, public health protocols. For quite a while in year two. And at the end of my second year, I was elected to be the president of the board and I've been serving in that role since. And we've really engaged in almost every big thing that a school board can do. We've hired a new superintendent, which is one of our biggest jobs. We've sold property and closed a school. We've come around to the decision to put a bond referendum on the ballot to ensure the financial health of the district moving forward. And, you know, had create policy through COVID. So we've been doing a lot of stuff in the last four years. I've learned a lot and I think just want to keep going, you know, it's it's been a really at times challenging, but really fulfilling experience for me. I think I've learned way more than I expected and I have a lot more to give. I've I've really kind of grown as a leader and I'm ready to continue in that role, especially as the district is really on the precipice of some really big things depending on the outcome of the election in November.
Well, and will you remain in the role of president if you're reelected or how how often do you guys decide whether when did that should change hands?
We do that every year. And so it's at the December meeting. It's an organizational meeting. And so it'll be up to the new board. They want to keep me going in this role. So I hope that they do. I've had support so far for the last two times. So I would love to continue to serve.
Mm hmm. And looking back on on all all those things that you've been through, are there are there any decisions that the board made that you wish would have gone differently? Or you you would with in hindsight, maybe have done something different?
Uh, it's hard because the one that comes to mind is probably where we ended up landing on our mass policy. And that is, you know, a huge can of worms that I don't really want to open up again. But I think at that time, you know, everyone was kind of trying to build the plane as we were flying it. And we were, we obviously didn't agree as a board with the right way to move forward in that decision. So I think the policy was, you know, better than not having one, but it could have been a little bit more cogent. I think it got a little confusing because it would change kind of every day sometimes, depending on what the the school, you know, exposure rates were. And so, you know, that could have been better, but I'm grateful that we had some kind of measure in place.
Mm hmm. Do you feel like, does this board have a decent ability to to disagree and to have robust conversations around things without, you know, it turning into some kind of animosity or how, what is the dynamic like there?
I think we do. I mean, we we got some pretty heated debates during that period, but even, you know, when you think about something like the sale of the soccer complex, like we didn't all see that in the same way. And I think that decision in particular really showed how this board does can work together, even when we don't agree. And so, you know, we were we were able to, you know, have different opinions about what we should do with the complex. And then we were able to disagree respectfully and then we moved on to whatever was next, you know. So, yeah, I think helping to build positive board dynamics is part of the role of being the president and something that I'm I'm striving for continuously to just kind of figure out how we can keep working together. Because we should not all agree with each other. We should have disagreement. It's really important for us to have that so that we can really be asking the important questions about an issue and making sure that, you know, we aren't being too hasty in how we're making a decision and really examining different parts of it. So I think disagreement is important. It just has to be done in a way that still allows us to work together.
Mm hmm. Looking, looking ahead, talk a little bit about the changes in Iowa legislature. We saw several changes that will impact schools. Certainly, certainly issues around books and as well as the education savings accounts and how that will impact public schools. Can you talk about some of those issues and how you think the board will will approach implementation or, or, you know, just kind of parsing everything that came out of the legislature?
Gosh, there were a lot of things, right? So I think starting with the the ESA or the voucher bill, I mean, we have some information now that we've had the official count that really it was about nine students difference for us in terms of, you know, students who've left to go to public school or private school and are not with us. So we did see quite a bit of shifting even before that count date. So at this time, I think that was better than we were expecting, at least better than I was expecting. I don't anticipate that's going to be better as more people are qualifying in the future, in the next couple of years for having a voucher. I mean, maybe, I think statewide, that's going to have a big impact. Perhaps it won't as much here, since a lot of the folks who are getting that seem to be people who are already going to using public education or private education in some way. But I think, you know, it's partly why we are being really strategic and thinking proactively about funding and making sure that we're making good decisions about our budget, because that impact is kind of nebulous. Other issues when it comes to the book banning issue or the curriculum issues, the districts had a really proactive approach to that and a collaborative approach. So I know like some districts around the state took some different tactics when they were trying to figure out which books were maybe a question mark. You know, using AI or something to figure out the the list. And we're not doing that. It's been a process that involves a team of people. So it's not one person's decision. It's not the board's decision. But it's a team of people reviewing that curriculum to see, you know, to make sure that what's what kids are are reading and what they're doing in schools doesn't line with the law. So I think that's where it's been a challenge because we have to follow the law, even if we don't agree with the law. But we want to do that in a way that best supports kids and their learning and supports our staff. It's hard when there's not a lot of guidance that's provided by the Department of Education, which has been the case for both the book bill and the gender identity bill. But, you know, we have a really strong district team and I think we have a a good board that is all about putting kids' interests first. And that helps us to make good decisions related to those laws.
Do you hear much from families or teachers, administrators regarding those issues? Is it is, do you feel like people are kind of resigned to it and going along with it? Or do you think there's pushback?
I think there was quite a bit of concern from educators in the summer, just because there it was, we knew it had the the curriculum laws had passed and the gender identity bills had passed, but we were just waiting for guidance. So I think there was a lot of uncertainty from educators especially about how, what they should be doing to make sure that they are supporting kids, but not putting their license at risk by breaking the law. It was unfortunate that we didn't learn until late in the summer that we weren't going to get guidance because that could have been a time that that teachers and administrators and staff were working on figuring this out. But our district's awesome, so they figured it out anyway and worked on it. So I personally have not heard a lot from parents or from teachers about, you know, concerns about this. And I haven't really heard a lot even from parents who were concerned about particular books or particular curriculums. And there haven't been a lot of folks who have expressed that either through email or through, you know, coming to the board meeting and talking about it. So I hope, you know, parents have an important role in education. There are systems in place that they can decide if they don't want their student to read something or to learn something, which is good, to have those processes. And so far, it seems like that's been sufficient in our district.
Okay. I'll let my colleagues jump in here. I'm sure everybody has.
Yeah, thanks, Amy and Kate. I'll just kind of ask you to maybe sort of elaborate a little bit further on that, you know. And you, I know you talked about being supportive of teachers and and educators and supportive of students, but then also the parents role. I guess, you know, you mentioned you haven't had a whole lot of feedback, but like, how do you, in your mind, or in our current board's mind, how do you balance that process in terms of input decision-making between parents and professional educators?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's one of the biggest challenges, I think, because you're not, when we hear from folks, it's not, they don't necessarily represent like a lot, the the mass opinion or the majority opinion about a particular issue. But it doesn't mean that their concerns are not, that we should not listen to their concerns or hear what they're saying and take those seriously. So, you know, it's it's definitely important for parents to be involved. And I will always help them figure out how to be involved at the right level. So if they're having a problem with their student's teacher, for example, like that's not a board issue, like I'm not going to go and micromanage a teacher, but I'm going to help educate the parent about the best ways to resolve that or make them aware of the processes that exist at the district level so that they can find the solutions that they're looking for. But, you know, I also have to keep in mind and and encourage our board to keep in mind that the loudest voices don't always mean that that's the most representative voice. And so it's important for us to try to hear from other people as well and to to be paying attention, especially to what our staff and administrators are saying, because they are the experts about education. And they have better knowledge often than we do as a board. You know, Amy Hawkins has regular meetings with the state and with other superintendents. The teachers are, you know, the on the front lines with our students every day, interacting with them. And so I'm always, I I have to factor in their professional judgment as well when we're making decisions.
So Kate, obviously, a lot of discussion in the community about the bond issue. And in yesterday's paper, this editorial board supported a yes vote and, you know, took a position on that. But we recognize, as does everybody with the school, that it's a mountain when it's 60% plus one vote. And the the thing that I hear the most is, yeah, well, the tax levy is not going to change this year. But what's to stop it from changing next year, the following year? And at the end of the day, our taxes are going to go way up. So two questions, how do you manage that messaging? And number two, your desire to stay in the role of president of the school board, if the bond issue were to fail, as the board president, where do you want to see things go and what what is the plan for next year if it doesn't pass?
That's, that's two really good questions. And I want to thank you for the editorial because I thought it was excellent. And we, you know, I appreciate that support for the the referendum and encouraging people to to vote and support. No, I can't advocate that people do, but personally, I really appreciated it. I think when we think about the messaging for the tax levy, I mean, I I think what's important for the public to keep in mind is that the tax levy that, you know, we're looking at with the bond issue brings us to where it was last year. And so it's not a different amount than it was last year. I suppose it could have been lower. But I think you're, you know, the community is getting so much for for this, you know, basic same level of taxation that that existed before. And we're still pretty historically low for our levy rate if you compare where we were even, you know, 10 or 15 years ago. That that rate keeps going down, partly because of enrollment issues and partly because of how things are valued and lots of buckets and complicated school finance stuff. But I think, you know, this is a real investment in our community that's not asking folks to pay more in their taxes going forward. Sure, I suppose like future boards could raise those amounts, but I think we've been very good stewards of taxpayer dollars. We've accomplished a lot with that money and we're very conscientious about making, you know, making sure that that the community is both investing in education, but also that we're doing the right things with that investment. If the bond were to not pass, because it is a high threshold, I think, you know, it's going to be a real time for us to regroup on where we go. Because some of the things that are part of this package are are big priorities for the board and they have been since before I was on it. So I think looking at how we air condition the schools that are not yet air conditioned, that's a priority and it has been for a long time. So we have to, you know, figure out if there's a different way to approach some of that. Or I'll, you know, figure out if we need to regroup and go for the bond again and try again. I mean, communities often find that it it's not always the case that they pass it on the first attempt. And from what I understand, Dubuque hasn't had one of these in like over 50 years or more. So, you know, I'm I'm feeling good about our community and the support for public education. I'm optimistic, I'm really optimistic that we're going to get it done this time. And if we don't, you know, I think that's going to be, those will be some challenging discussions that I think we'll have to have as a board with the administration. And as we're thinking about strategic planning for how do, what are our priorities going forward? How do we make sure that we are financing education in the right way? And and hopefully really not having an impact on students and their learning in the process of making those financial decisions.
Are you, are you hearing about that issue as you're campaigning? And I don't know if you're door knocking or things like that. Is it something that people are bringing up?
People are very positive. I've only heard positive things. Every once in a while, I'll get a couple of questions about, you know, some things that maybe folks are not sure about. And and even a little bit of pushback from at times about some things. But it seems like once people understand what we're trying to do and why, then they kind of get on board. Like I did have a constituent who is concerned about, you know, what happens to the Washington Middle School building because it is a historically beautiful building. And then when I was able to explain a little bit about, well, it's also 100-year-old building. It's not an equitable space if you compare it to what's happening at, you know, Roosevelt. And then they're kind of like, oh, you're right, you know. So I think once you kind of bring it back to what's what the impact is going to be for kids, I've heard overwhelming support for this. And not a lot of, not really anybody sending emails or pushing back to not support it.
My my kind of follow-up question is, we talked about sort of the how you're doing the messaging and sort of what you do if the bond doesn't pass. You know, if you do, you know, as as noted, it's not totally uncommon for school districts for a bond or or other municipalities for a bond issuance to 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 fail on the first one. And then, you know, to go for a second and and see about that. If that is the case, would you think that we would need to try to run the same thing and and kind of work on the messaging? Or do you think maybe we would need to to break that up into certain smaller pieces? Or what would you think would be, you know, the best tact for it if that does come to pass?
Yeah, I that's, I would want to talk a little more about kind of the, what are the financial implications for us as a district? If we were to, you know, break this up into smaller projects? So I think our hope was that we can just ask one time from the community and then do all of these things with this money, which really touch a lot of different areas and could impact a lot of students in really positive ways. So if it were to not pass, I think we'd really, I would think we need to reevaluate like some of the priorities about what, are there things that still could be done? Like, are there things that we could do, you know, potentially with save money that would get us a little further along? But, you know, some of the the implications of it waiting or not, you know, having to do this in a year instead of doing it now is is a concern that if we wouldn't be able to keep the tax rate the same or that the prices for these things will continue to go up. So, um, yeah, I think we would really have to think, you know, strategically and prioritize like what, what can we do then in the interim?
Yeah, it's it's hard to imagine. I mean, is there a scenario where we'd put them, the district would put the money into into air conditioning Jefferson?
I don't know. I mean, that is such a tricky situation because I think ultimately we still want to get to a two-middle-school scenario. And so, you know, some of the discussion we had before the decision to to go for the bond referendum was how to prioritize which buildings to actually air condition if that was something we were going to do. Because we don't want to air condition a building that ultimately we might end up closing at some point in the future. That's not a good use of taxpayer dollars. And and yeah, that's what's hard because, you know, in terms of equity and the issue of wanting kids to be able to learn in a comfortable environment and for our staff to teach there, like, yeah, we should try to do it, but it just doesn't make a lot of sense if we know in the long run that that's not a building that we're going to continue to use.
What what are the the main reasons for the need for a two-two-middle-school scenario? And what what are the benefits of that of having that feeder system?
I think, you know, the benefit of the feeder system, one thing that's really exciting about it is that when you, when the redistricting happened for the high schools, I think, when was that, like over 10 years ago or something? There's a lot of care put into making sure that those those two schools were pretty reflective of each other, that they really had kind of the same demographic makeup. And, you know, that's been a positive impact, I think, on both of those communities and both of those schools. And so being able to to district our middle schools in the same way, I think, is a really big benefit, which we're not really seeing now, you know, the the population, student populations at the three middle schools don't necessarily kind of match each other, whereas this would help them do that. And I think it could provide some stability for students to to kind of have those connections as they're going on to the next phase of their education. And, you know, primarily, we know as well with the funding issues coming from the state, not really keeping up with inflation, that we do have to find ways to find financial efficiencies. And closing Jefferson is about, what, like a three and a half million dollar per year savings in the general fund, which is crucial for us. Because we know, you know, we have to keep a certain level of unspent balance and all of that stuff. And it's, you know, we're at risk if we don't make some changes with the number of buildings that we have. So while it it was, you know, part, part of the reason is to have this gain financially, not gain, but to have the savings financially. It also, I think, will be a benefit for our students and just to be able to have more equitable facility. I don't know if you've walked around those two, those three buildings in a while, but they're, you know, those Jefferson and Wash are awesome buildings. They've served us so well for 100 years. I walked around on the 100-year anniversary of those buildings and they're fantastic. But they're just not the same kind of learning environment that you would get at Roosevelt. It's just totally different. And we have to do better for our students.
What would you like to see happen to i- if the bond, if the bond were to pass? And what do you see for the future of the Jefferson Building?
Uh, I don't know. I mean, it is in such a lovely location. I was, I took the my kids with me when we went to the celebrations, which they weren't that excited about until they heard there were going to be cupcakes and cookies and things and then they were all in. But we were just looking at that view of the river from Jefferson and it's gorgeous. So I think there's all kinds of potential, maybe for housing or some some other kind of facility that that could make use of that building. Because, you know, they are 100 years old, but they're great buildings and I think there's still life in them. It's just, they're not well situated or designed for our, you know, for learning in in this day and age.
Kate, I know that the results of the bond issue will have a a pretty significant impact on, you know, what the decisions and direction of the board here in in the future. Are there other items separate from that that you see the board having to address over the next couple, three years, this next term with regard to other educational factors, graduation rates, education levels and stuff that are separate from the bond referendum?
Yeah, I mean, I think we'll, we were, you know, we, I think this year feels more normal for people than the last three years have been after, you know, the impact of COVID. But I don't, even despite that, I think that there's still, there's still gaps that we need to attend to with, you know, how students were impacted by that time. And, you know, the gap kind of just keeps going. It's not like you just fix it in second grade and then they're fine forever, you know. So we just kind of have to continue to be attentive to that. And especially how, you know, maybe students in different subgroups are impacted differently by some of these educational gaps. So I think looking at that and paying paying attention to equity issues around graduation rate, around access to honors classes and AP classes, and then just paying attention to just where these, you know, maybe learning, lost learning opportunities were and how those affected different students is going to be very important. I think there's been quite a bit of need as well to support students and families and our staff with issues around brain health and mental health. So I think that's going to be continuing need that we're going to have as a district, just to make sure that we have the resources that kids need if they're going through a hard time or they're facing challenges because of brain health. So we've made some steps in that with the brain health rooms in the high schools. And I think that, you know, the board would like to see that expanded, but it's not, it's not so easy as just like putting comfy pillows in a room, you know, it has to be staffed by someone who's qualified to to really meet their, meet kids' needs. And then I think we're going to be also just looking at how to retain and recruit staff and to keep, you know, our high-quality educators here in Dubuque and to attract more and ideally even diversify the folks that work for us right now. And that's been a big challenge, not just, I think it's been a big challenge across Iowa when we see kind of the teacher shortage issue. There's fewer students that are enrolling in teacher education programs at colleges. And so we have to figure out ways to help, you know, draw draw folks to come to our district and teach here.
What, what is your go-to for getting feedback from the constituents that you represent? Do you, how do you generally receive, you know, get get, take the pulse of the community on some of these key issues and be sure you're hearing all sides?
Gosh, that's such a good question, Amy. It's probably one of the most challenging parts of this because, you know, folks usually only reach out if they're either really happy or really mad about something. And so it's harder to kind of keep, keep the connections with like, just, you know, folks who maybe don't have a strong opinion either way. So, um, social media is one way that that happens. So I do post things on social media. Sometimes people comment on that. I do get messages sometimes through that. I also have some connections, you know, my my friends and colleagues in the community. Obviously, that's not a representative sample. Bob Woodward would agree with me with our research background. But just, you know, trying to talk to folks about their opinions about issues and also staying connected with the the folks in our buildings, educators in our buildings. I'm probably still a little more localized to Prescott because that's where my kids go. So, you know, I know our PTO pretty well and the person who is the president of that and that staff. But I have been getting out into the other buildings too and it's the best. It's the best part of being on the school board is getting to hang out with kids in their buildings. It's one of the best parts anyway. So, you know, I think that's the primary ways that I've tried to do that. And then also just kind of keeping myself informed. So I read the TH every day and make sure I'm paying attention to what's going on locally. And, you know, I I don't know, sometimes it's hard because I don't necessarily always want to see what people are posting on social media. But I try to, you know, still pay attention to it and see what what folks are thinking about.
Are there any other issues out? Are there any other issues out there that you're, you're hearing from parents about? Or, or things that are kind of on, on your radar that maybe we haven't asked about?
I'm trying to think about that. It seems like, yeah, not, not a lot. I think people are excited about the virtual snow days. I haven't heard anything about that in terms of a negative response to that. Not too much has been bouncing back at us lately. So I think, you know, I hope that's a good sign that people are happy with, with the strong work that the district's doing. I mean, obviously, people were not super happy at the beginning of the year when it was 120 degrees outside. But yeah, so we'll probably hear some things about how we make weather decisions. But more or less, I mean, I guess one thing that does come to mind is every, I do hear sometimes from folks who are concerned about safety at school. And that's, you know, a perennial concern of the district and the board just to make sure our schools are safe. And sometimes we hear from folks who are worried about cell phones at school. And that's also just kind of a hot potato that we're trying to figure out. So those kinds of things pop up from time to time.
Yeah, and you mentioned that about the, the terrible hot, terribly hot week, uh, week plus at the beginning of the school year. Does, does the board ever talk about not starting, pushing back the start of the school year? I mean, the first week of June is, is statistically not as hot as the, that third week of August.
Yeah, we haven't discussed it. I think the focus is usually on trying to get started as early as the legislature allows, which is August 23rd. And I think part of the rationale for that is to not have the school year extend too far into the summer. Because it seems like, you know, that's the preference for a lot of folks, our staff, but also, you know, parents in the community are ready for summer, I think. I don't know, I'm always kind of like, what am I doing with these kids all summer? But luckily we figure it out. So I think, yeah, we haven't really talked about pushing it back or, you know, further in the year. It's usually trying to get it started earlier so that we can get that time in before June, ideally.
So it seems like people always say that no matter when school starts, it's the hottest week of the year. So I would advocate for like October, November, December, something like that for a starting date, just to.
Just to have a warm-up?
Are you not a winter guy, Mike? You don't want?
I'm not a winter guy, no.
Okay, got it, got it. I don't know about that. If we could find like really good camps and childcare, like maybe, maybe.
Any other questions for Kate? Or anything you want to touch on that we, we didn't bring up, Kate?
Um, I don't think so. You asked a lot of the things that have been on my mind. So I'm just very excited for another round if I'm elected again by the, by the community. And there's, there's still work that I'm excited to be involved in and to get done. So I'm ready to go.
What's the next three weeks look like for you? Do you, are you doing a lot of, a lot of campaigning type stuff?
Yeah, I'm going to be doing some work on January, or on, in January, hello. Uh, on Saturday is the word I'm looking for. To get, I have a bunch of yard signs, so I need to get the yard signs out. And then, yeah, I'll be doing some door knocking. And if there's time, I'm hoping to do maybe a listening session hosted by an educator or teacher, but I haven't set that up yet. I started a new role at Loris, so my semester's been a little crazy as I'm taking that on. But, you know, it's been good, it's been.
What, what's the new role?
I am the Associate Dean of Science, the School of Science and Health. So I'm still teaching in sociology, but my load is reduced because now I'm, and I'm mostly an administrator now.
Okay. Good to know.
Yeah.
All right, well, we appreciate your time and appreciate your service to the board and wish you luck the rest of the way.
Thank you so much. I appreciate this time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Take care.